Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 24th meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commission. Let the record reflect that all members are present and the meeting is called to order. It's been sort of a long-established custom of this commission to begin each of our meetings with a moment of reflection, a brief time of reflection, and I think tonight, in light of the events that have happened in the world in the last two weeks, that may be especially appropriate. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Very good. This is a time that's set aside for announcements from the planning commissioners. Do we have any events or announcements this evening? We're a dull group tonight. Thank you. Okay. Then moving on to the consent calendar, we have the current and advanced planning processing list. Are there any questions, comments, revisions? Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
The move we approve the consent calendar.
Second.
So you have a motion and a second, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries five zero. So then we will move on briskly to our public hearings.
Public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. How did I?
Slowed us down a little bit, I'm sorry.
Yeah. There's too much writing after public comment period. It always makes me skip over it. Yes, this is a time for general public comment. Any member of the public who would like to address the planning commission on items which are not on tonight's agenda, please step forward, give us your name, and we'd be happy to hear from you. Seeing none, we will move on to public hearings. And our first public hearing tonight is item number B1, case number CP0-461 and UP0-405, located at 800 Quintana Street here in Morro Bay. And I believe that Cindy is going to give us the staff report on this.
Good evening, Chair Teft, and members of the planning commission. This is a public hearing item for a coastal development permit and conditional use permit for 800 Quintana Road, case number CPO461 and UPO405. The proposed request is to establish a new Verizon unmanned telecommunications facility by way of installation of an antenna on a pole on the roof of an existing two-story commercial building. I've prepared a few slides to walk you through what the proposal looks like. Here are the street view images, and this previous slide here shows you the vicinity. It is located, as I said, on Quintana Road. And a street view image. This is a site that is also has a current telecommunications facility on the rooftop. Planning commission approved in 2014 facilities for, actually, they approved an amendment to facilities for AT&amp;T, original AT&amp;T establishment was several years earlier. And the AT&amp;T work has since been completed. And this is another street view angle just a little bit south of the building. So the proposal, as I said, is to co-locate Verizon facilities with existing AT&amp;T facilities on a two-story building. And this would be a new facility for Verizon with the goal to expand capacity in its local network and based on consumer demand. Specifically, the proposal includes installation of one new Verizon antenna. The rooftop lease area is approximately nine and a half by seven and a half feet, and in the next few slides, I'll show you a rooftop site plan of that. In addition to the single antenna, there is also a proposal for miscellaneous associated equipment, remote radio units, a wireless GPS antenna, and ground-mounted equipment shelter and electrical meter. That would be at the northwest side of the building. This is an existing roof plan. I've added some arrows just to hopefully make it a little bit more readable. This is the roof plan. This large rectangle in the center, it's denoted on the plans as saying open to courtyard below. The actual Verizon antenna would be here where the arrow is pointing to, and then this darker line here is the miscellaneous remote radio units. The ground-mounted equipment is on this corner of the building, and for purposes of orientation, Quintana would be at the top of this picture with the Mobile Home Park to the left and to the backside. And I believe across the street is the area where you, there's the auto mechanic shop and Burger King, just to kind of orientate yourself to where on Quintana that is. This slide is a blow-up of this area right here, so just greatly zoomed in. This shows you where the antenna would be located, the radio unit equipment. The applicant provided visual simulations. The left image shows existing and proposed. The single antenna is hard to see. There is right there what that would look like. This is taken from Morro Bay Boulevard and, as you can see from the foreground, at the car wash area. This is a zoomed-in picture of this area on the right with the arrow pointing to. That little line is what the antenna would look like as a simulation. So as stated here, the applicant is showing on the plans that it would be an antenna mounted to a new support pole. This is a simulation that is showing you the northeast, and it is, this is actually, if you were at the intersection of Morro Bay Boulevard and Harbor and you were looking east toward the building, and there is a little line there, and then again, I've zoomed in so you could see a little bit more. These are the plans that show the southwest elevation, and again, the same image, but here you're just able to see without the color simulation, the area of the antenna, support pole, and then here on the side is the ground-mounted equipment, which would be approximately three to four feet in height, as shown on the plans. And then, so this image is if you were standing behind the commercial building away from Quintana Road, and then this is if you were standing on the, well, northwest side or the, you know, on the side of the building where the Mobile Home Park is to the north, but it says northwest. So again, the antenna, and then here you're seeing the equipment cabinet. This here is an existing shed, and this shows existing equipment, so this is new and that's As per U.S. FCC requirements, a radio frequency report was prepared, and that is included as an attachment in your staff report, excuse me. It's included as an attachment to your staff report. The report evaluated the impact of radio frequency emissions as a result of this proposed facility, and then also separately evaluated the impacts with its exposure levels combined with the existing AT&amp;T facility that's there. The report concluded that the facility would be within the maximum exposure limits that the FCC allows, and of course, it's worth pointing out that the RF report assumes worst-case scenarios. It shows that it's within the maximum allowable limits and would not be allowed to operate. FCC's permits would not allow them to do that if it was exceeding the limits. Nonetheless, as the staff has done with previous projects brought before the planning commission, staff is recommending a condition of approval be added that would require a post-construction compliance report, and you will see that as a condition in the planning section of your resolution. The RF report recommended various measures to ensure compliance with FCC requirements, and these are also listed as planning commissions, and in summary, they include locking roof access so only that authorized personnel would be allowed on the roof, providing training to authorized personnel, and marking and posting explanatory signs consistent with FCC Upon review of these requirements, the visual simulations and the hazards reports, staff is recommending that the planning commission conditionally approve the project by adopting Planning Commission Resolution 4515, which includes the findings and the conditions of approval. And if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them. I would like to point out that staff did get feedback from the applicant. Apparently, the 101 is packed with accidents tonight in both directions, and despite leaving a good 45 minutes early, as of five to six, she was still stuck in San Luis Obispo. So she wanted me to let you know that she is desperately trying to get here to also answer your questions, and hopefully she will be here before we conclude this public hearing, but I will try my best in her absence.
Thank you, Cindy. Before we move on to questions, I'll ask for any ex parte communications from any, so none to report. So then are there any questions for staff on this? Michael?
Can you tell me the zoning height restrictions on the structure? I know they came back earlier with the mansard that's on the corners now. Was that the height limitation at that point?
The height limit in this zone, C1, is 30 feet. With the mansard roof, when AT&amp;T came to planning commission in early 2014, they did get a height exception to extend that, to provide for screening. And so in this case, that's why you won't see the RRU units because their height is low enough that they're screened by that. The only thing is that portion of the antenna that pokes out.
I guess my question is, I know in the code we talk about things that are secondary to the purpose of the building, like if we have a chimney on a house, it can violate the zoning envelope. But this is an actual secondary lease aspect that's attached to the top of the building that's going past that envelope. So is this something that, to avoid visual clutter, we can suggest needs a different kind of height variance?
Well, the code allows for those height limits for projections subject to a minor use permit, and that can be incorporated through the conditional use permit approval that the applicant is requesting.
I guess my only concern is, well, it's more for comments later. Okay, thanks.
I have a quick question. In looking at the, I guess at Exhibit B, proposed, if, am I reading that correctly? When you have the line, you may want to bring it back up on the screen, and the arrow pointing where, okay, yeah, where you see the arrow pointing where the antenna is going to be. Now, is the antenna only going to protrude, let's say here, it looks like a quarter of an inch, but that far, or does it go, because I can't quite see where the designated arrow starts on that. So how high off the top of the roof is that antenna going to protrude?
Just a second.
Okay. See if I can, is it here, here, or right there? That's what I was thinking, but I just want her to confirm it. Because in reading the staff report, it said 35 feet, but I think that's from the ground
Okay. So the antenna is going to be the same height as the existing whip antennas, which is about five feet higher, 35 feet. Building's at 30 feet.
So it'd be five feet.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh, and can I just say real quickly, I got an update from the applicant. They are now off the 101 and on their way here, so the traffic is moving, just FYI.
Okay, great. Do you know if the RF study, exposure study, thought about or included the occupants of the office building? I know these are directional radiation antennas, but they mentioned the Mobile Home Park and they mentioned ground level, but you're going to have people in those office buildings eight to 10 hours a day.
They do talk about preventing occupational exposures. What I recall from when the application for AT&amp;T came to planning commission in 2014, and granted, that was for a different type of antenna, so the applicant may be able to clarify this when she arrives, but that they're, that they go out so that the closer you, well, what I recall is that it doesn't go in that direction, it extends out and take that with a grain of salt. I might have that misunderstood, and so I might defer that answer to, for the applicant when they arrive, but...
Because it seems like if they, well, I guess I'll wait to ask her, because it seems like even if they're directional, there would be some feedback into some of those, some of those office buildings on the far side of the buildings.
So they have several of the results in the study on page three or four at the top, and it talks about calculations at 2.4% of the maximum allowed exposure at the ground level adjacent to the building. In operation, consistent with both antennas operating, it's 9.1% of the public exposure The maximum calculated at communal level at the nearby residence is 7.8% of the public exposure limit. The nearby commercial buildings is 2.8%.
Yeah, I just didn't see any mention of the office occupants on those upper floors.
I think it's because of what Cindy said, they're directional antennas, but, I mean, I'll continue to look.
And also just for clarification in the site and facilities description on page two and four, it does state that the antenna would employ no down tilt and describes its maximum power and the orientation. So that may also be why they didn't address that, just because it's not pointing in that direction.
For one thing, on page two, about the, under computer modeling method, it notes that a directional antenna's radiation pattern is not fully formed at locations very close by. And when we looked at the AT&amp;T, I remember that there was a considerable amount of radiation that was directed downward close to the antenna. It wasn't a concern there because those antennas are mounted at the very edge of the building, so that was just going off into empty space. But maybe, that's not the case here, maybe that needs to be addressed.
And then one other question is, do we have a time period of backup power supply?
That wasn't identified in the application.
They had a cabinet identified as a backup power supply, but I didn't see any mention of the time.
Right, like 48 or 72 hours.
Right.
Right, it wasn't specified.
Okay. Thanks.
I would imagine, though, based on some other applications, it's probably at 48 hours. Past approvals that we've done, you are correct, they have been required to be at 72 hours. It requires a bigger cabinet, and, but I think their standard is to offer the 48.
Michael?
And the last thing I wanted to ask was, the simulation does appear to have taken the existing units that are there in aggregate with the new unit rather than just the new unit. So that 7.8% includes some simulation of the existing units.
That's correct.
Yeah. And if my recollection is correct, we asked for post-construction readings on that last set. Was that in here as well? That we do a post-construction verification of this?
Right, right, that was required, and they did submit it, but unfortunately, it was not included in this particular staff report.
Do we know, did it conform with the original expectations? Did it exceed the model?
No, it didn't. I will admit, it's been quite some time since that was submitted, so I don't have those numbers at the top of my head, but it was, as expected, well within results or limits.
If there's no further questions, then we'd like to open this up for public comment. Typically, if the applicant or applicant's representative has made it here off the freeway, we'd like to offer them the opportunity to speak first. Are, no? Not here yet? Okay. So then, any other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay. I will reserve the right to ask some of these questions when she does arrive. I assume she's calling on Verizon to let you know what her... Okay. Okay. So then let's bring it back for discussion at this point. We'll close public comment, bring it back for discussion by the commission. Anyone feel motivated? No? Michael?
Yeah, I understand the safety issues. I'm always skeptical of the science on these things. My concern, though, is the visual clutter we're starting to accumulate on this structure and the fact that we're exceeding the height limitation of a, with a non-building-specific accessory. And that's, I think, because it sits at the crest of the hill, visible from Route 1. I think we need to be concerned about that kind of thing.
That's exactly what I was going to bring up as well, is setting a, kind of a precedent for something like this, you know, like when you, we have a variance, right, height variance. Let me just, and I'm just throw something out, like if you wanted to put some wind generators or some, not this building, but some other buildings, this already had a variance before, yeah? And now we're going, are we going higher than it was before? No, we're just keeping it the same, just bringing it out. That's one of the main concerns. And then also, the science is, the science really is still up in the air on all this, all these issues. When we talked about the, that hill over there, Radcliffe, I think it was, we kind of went through that over there as well, you know? But that's it for now.
My only concern, and I think I'm echoing what Commissioner Luer said, is the possible exposure to people who are in the building. You know, you look at the diagram, and it's all, it's blue, and you know, you think, oh, well, you know, you're just talking about cement and a ceiling, keeping that blue down from, you know, your employee on the third floor, whatever, so it is troubling. The visual clutter, you know, I think it's, it doesn't bother me as much as the possibility of someone getting ill from this.
Yeah, that's my concern also. And then the other thing is, this is a emergency facility that, you know, once again, you know, I believe that we're tasked as individuals to have 72 hours of backup food and water and supplies in case of an emergency. And this is going to be, this is a primary communication facility for most of the population now because, you know, most people don't have landlines anymore. So once again, I would like to see a standard provision of 72-hour backup power supply for these facilities.
Well, yeah, I would basically echo the same concerns. In terms of the visual, I mean, given the fact that cellular telephone service is sort of oxygen now, I'm wondering if, I can't come up with another location that would be less intrusive, I guess. The one question I would have is whether, does this have to be white? I mean, I think part of the fact that it looks so visible is that it's, you know, it's white. I'm wondering if it can't be the color of the mansard, the, you know, the bronze color or something.
I'm sure it can be any color we want it to be. The representative's here now, so we can have her come up to speak to that issue and others, obviously.
Yeah, so if you don't mind, I'd open public comment, and I think there were a number of questions that you probably have the answers to.
Of course, I'm so sorry I'm late. I came from Shell Beach and rain fell from the sky, and we all got very nervous on the highway, and so apologize for being late. Let's see, to, we've, I've been before some of you before, and we've sort of dealt with these same issues, and so in answer to your question for the visibility, this is, this differs from the larger facilities in that this is to help capacity, and a classic example is me sitting on the highway right now. I could not get a text out to Cindy, I could not hold a call to my mother because everyone and their mother was doing the exact same thing at that moment. And so that master facility becomes overwhelmed, and these smaller cells, which are these smaller antennas, this one's only two feet tall, are what offload that capacity during those times, during tourist seasons, emergencies, and all of that. So that's what you're seeing more of the carriers doing now instead of the big trees. They're doing these smaller cell sites to offload that capacity, number one. Number two, yes, I ideally would probably make this more look like a ventilation pipe and also the color of the mansard, and I bet it would disappear a lot more, number two. And then number three, with all the rooftop sites that I've been before you with before, what we've done is there's, the concerns are valid, and what we've done in the past is, number one, either have, after RF reports, after the site is constructed, to show what those levels are inside the building, on the rooftop, to make sure that we are compliant is what we've done in the past. I think we did that with the AT&amp;T facility on this rooftop, let alone, number two, is that there is a rooftop safety plan that sits with the... Let alone, number two, is that there is a rooftop safety plan that sits with the building manager, so that anyone that gets on that rooftop is aware of what's on there, as well as we have to have striping around the antennas, so that if someone's up there, they're fully aware of where it is. And so, we have to have those safety constraints, not only to protect Verizon, but to make sure that we are compliant with what your information you're being given right now, with respect to the safety of the antennas. So, that's how we've dealt with it in the past, but I'm available to answer any other questions you might have as well.
Your ball.
Are you comfortable with a 72-hour emergency backup power supply?
These operate a little bit differently. So, in the past, I think you've seen the larger facilities, and I think the last one we did was the one on Radcliffe, where we had to play around with that generator size, and being able to go the full 72 hours. These are actual plugins, especially buildings like this. So, they're gonna have a receptacle at the building site. And so, when and if that goes down for a long period of time, the backup batteries go out, they're gonna wheel up a generator and plug it into that building, and it can go well beyond 72 hours. But there's no generator on-site, because the rooftop, you wouldn't want it on the rooftop, there's no building space, no parking space. And so, that's how they deal with these smaller facilities.
What kind of wattage does this draw?
I'm sorry?
What wattage does this draw?
You know, that, God, that's a really good question. I think it's in the RF report. Let me look really quick. Twenty, would be 2,420 watts. That's of the antennas, though. That doesn't tell you what the, God, I wanna say it's not much. I wanna say, we use 100-amp service for powering the electrical portion of it, but I'm not sure on the wattage it would require for a generator.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just thinking, on your amp hours on your batteries, probably be fairly minimal to bump it up to 72 hours.
I can look into that, yeah. I know it was a little bit of a struggle to get the 72 hours with the full site. I do know that they don't have, I know the batteries don't go for very long, they go for like an eight hour, it's for a very short period of time, in the event of a fast power outage, that we would normally experience in our area.
But if we, you know, once again, if we have a major earthquake or something, we're gonna be pretty low on your totem pole, so...
Well, not so much, because San Luis Obso County, as a whole, all of emergency services that I'm aware of, use the Verizon network. And so, it really is of utmost importance, when that happens, that Verizon, well, number one, the master facility is the one on Radcliffe, as the well is the one on the hilltops above Morro Bay, those are gonna be the ones where the generators kick on, are gonna give a majority of the coverage that you need. A lot of these smaller cell sites are for capacity, for the data that we're using. When we're all sitting in our homes at night, and our iPads and our phones, and are talking to our families, that's where that data and voice is being used, at the peak hours. And so, when a true emergency, these will be kicked on, but your first priority is gonna be the ones that already have generators. So, hope that helps.
So, have, I mean, just to be a little bit more specific, because, am I incorrect in saying that in the near field, these antennas do have a fair amount of vertical spread, in terms of the radiation?
The reports that you're given, and the graphs that you're given, are if these antennas were operating at full power, the maximum they could possibly operate at, when they're actually turned on, one, two things happens. When they're actually turned on, they're usually at a much lower level, of which that report that I was telling you about, after we turn it on to verify all those levels, are lower, number one. And number two, these capacity sites can be turned off and on as needed. The sites that cover Morro Bay are left on 24/7, versus the smaller sites, if there's a capacity issue, they can be turned on or turned off. And so, the near field is compliant, as the report states, and then, but we also have to ensure occupational and public safety. If there was an air conditioning repairman up there, they would need to be aware with the striping that we have to have around these antennas, that show that there is something there, that they need to be aware of, as well as a rooftop safety plan, that tells them what it is, what their concerns need to be. Often, if there's something, for example, an entire roof that has to be replaced, we have to turn that site down, until they're completely done. And so, those are the safeguards that are in place for that type of installation.
Right. I think we understand the rooftop issue, and I think we understand the levels at ground level. What we don't understand is the level of radiation in the second-floor offices, and I think that's our concern.
And in the past, what we've done, I think we did for the last AT&amp;T, when they came up there, was to test those levels, is when, if the site was approved. For example, let's say, we built the facility, turned it on, and found at the reading at that second story was beyond the occupational or public safety standards, then the site gets shut down. Verizon has no, no carrier particularly. FCC is becoming more and more stringent on making sure that sites are compliant. And so, Verizon has no interest on turning on something that's going to harm someone, or spending money on developing something that's going to harm someone. And so, the only safeguards we have right now are getting those, we call them as-built RF reports. So, actually, these are predictions, right? Worst-case scenario, still predictions. But when that site is built, we go get a report that takes readings at the places that you're asking for, so that we know for sure. And if those numbers don't look like what we want them to be, which is safe for everyone involved, then that site does not get to operate. So, that's typically how we've ensured that. Otherwise, we're just basing this on predictions, and those are just what they are.
Tricia? I think we were a little concerned, because we didn't see the prediction for the person who's in the second-floor office. So, there were predictions for other places throughout the community, but, and maybe I missed it.
I'm just looking, sometimes there's a notation. Okay, so, single-story on page three, the notations are, single-story mobile homes located at 60 feet away, reduce, let's see, these are photographs of the signs. So, they're just looking at the mobile homes from 60 feet away. You're correct, they don't give the second-story readings, but the commission, if they choose to, could condition us to comply with that through the reports. If we assume that we're compliant, and we're well below, I mean, the conclusion for this particular report, sorry, I'm making a mistake, is 2.8 percent of the public limit. And so, if we're safe at that level, I would make the assumption that we would be safe with, at that second-story level, but to be verified.
There's also an exterior stair in the courtyard, that looks like it's much closer than any of the mobile homes, and that doesn't have any protection on those occupants at all, except perhaps the diagonal line through maybe a corner of the roof, as someone's going up that stair. So, I would wanna see us take readings inside the courtyard on the public stair.
Absolutely. You can enumerate however many you would like, and Verizon's comfortable making sure we get that information to you.
I have a little concern with the science behind, you know, what's acceptable, what's not, but that's another story. Is there, is there something that you could do to, like, take more of a proactive way of addressing, like, these, for instance, the second story, like a lead material, or something that you could put on the roof, to try to minimize that? Or is that done at all?
The signal has to be mostly unobstructed, that's why you don't really see too many barriers. We do fiberglass, for example, if it was decided that we wanted to do maybe a larger parapet around the front of this building, then we would do a fiberglass screen wall, but the signal still goes through that. Other than that, there's very few materials that that signal is not gonna get blocked or impeded by, lead being one of them. And so, to my knowledge, there's not too many tools, that I know of, that are gonna help in that capacity, because the signal is obviously trying to do something, to propagate.
Right.
And if you're stopping it from a certain point, that's stopping it from doing its job. And so, to my knowledge, there's nothing that I know of that can be put in front of them.
Like, for instance, like, the occupants underneath there, you know, you're trying to protect, let's say, you know, giving them, you know, give their radiation there.
Signals don't go down, they only go out.
But it does, it does, this has a potential of spilling over, is that right? No?
It's usually like a flashlight beam, and so, if you look at a two-foot beam that you have here, it's going to be like this, and it's going to go towards the horizon, it doesn't really go towards the ground, it doesn't, it's not efficient in that way.
Okay, so, you're pretty comfortable, basically saying, okay, we feel pretty confident that when this signal goes out, the occupants, we could run a meter down there, and it'll be...
Absolutely. In my time that I've been doing this, the only ones that I've ever seen that are getting close to the levels of where you don't wanna spend a lot of time, are the ones that are on the hilltops, that like, I wanna say, almost like where the radio, microwaves, all of the communications, along with cell sites, that's where, you know, the hilltop sites that have a ton of antennas up there, those levels have, would obviously be closer. But I've never seen up to, you know, three carriers at a facility cumulatively come to a level. But once again, that is something that needs to be, I think, verified, and it also helps to make sure that you are comfortable with approving these, because that's all you have, is the information you're giving, and so, if we make sure it's from a third party, that can even be chosen by staff if they need, and make sure that you're getting what you need, and the assurances that you need, with respect to it going down towards the rooftop, or to the second-story courtyard and stairway.
Any other questions?
What is your timeline for completion?
These typically take so, if the commission chose to approve it today, go through our appeal period, then we submit for our building permit, I'd say probably another two weeks after that. On average, six, so we're probably looking with the holidays and everything, complete construction by March, I would say, somewhere in that timeline.
And so, you'd have new reports in March, April?
I think the way we handled it last time, is we could not get final inspection and turn our site on until we deliver, so we could go run a quick test, to turn, you have to turn it on in order to get the numbers. And then, we submitted that report for approval with staff, and then, at that time, once they saw the numbers they were comfortable with, and we were able to get our final inspection, I think is how we did that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So, we'll bring it back to commission for discussion.
I'd be comfortable with the post-construction readings and report, especially having it in the areas of those offices, and in the courtyard. The other thing, too, is I, you know, I don't believe this would be a real problem, to put a small gen pack there for emergency backup power, have it run off of, it could even be run off of natural gas, to then, therefore, charge the batteries and keep the batteries charged. So, I mean, it could be, it would actually even be intermittent, and I wouldn't have a problem with it running off of the natural gas line, so there wouldn't have to be a storage facility there, like you would on a hilltop site, because you'll have natural gas at that site. So, but I think, you know, I think unless they could prove that it's infeasible, you know, for one reason or another, I would like to have a 72-hour backup period.
Should we ask the applicant about that? Is that...
Sure, that's fine.
Yeah. We'll open public comment again for that issue.
Just, what I would suggest is, and I think what we did last time, is that we could not prove that it was not feasible. I think we had language in there that said, if feasible, provide 72-hour backup, and we did, we're not, so we ended up having to find a generator that could do what we needed it to do. I don't know enough about this, other than that there is a plug for a roll-up generator, so I would assume that we could look into natural gas, but I would just like that language, if feasible?
Yeah.
If that's okay with you?
Yeah, that would be fine. I'm not trying to create something that can't be done, you know, put a condition on there that can't be met.
Okay, great. Yeah, then, no problem, I'll look into that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anyone else?
I do think we need to have whatever technical document needed to get the height in here correctly. I really don't wanna assume, because we've granted something before, that we've given a window to put anything up there that anybody wants, at that higher elevation.
So, what's the question exactly? I'm not sure I'm understanding you.
Cindy said the height limitation was 30 feet, and we had granted a special privilege, or whatever the technical mechanism was, we granted the last time with the Mansards, and this is a separate issue. And I think, I just don't wanna set a precedent, that anytime somebody gets one exception for height, that somebody can blanket the site...
This height exception is standing on its own. It's part of the conditional use permit that you're approving this evening.
Okay.
It's not part of that.
Continue.
Cindy was just pointing out that we had a height exception granted for the Mansard, because that was a screening mechanism for equipment that's up there.
Right.
There are also antennas that stick up above that, there are whip antennas, I think. And then, this would be the same thing. We can grant height exceptions through the minor use permit process, at staff level, or through the conditional use permit process, at the planning commission level. This thing stands on its own.
I just wanna make sure we don't, we don't set a precedent, that people don't have to ask for a height exception, I mean, or whatever the, I just wanna make sure we're saying we're allowing something to be higher than the zoning height for this area. Because I can see more of these things starting to show up, and it's eventually, you know, we're trying to do a sign ordinance that cleans up the town, and then we start putting antennas everywhere in the town. And it was, we did the co-location study, which I think was an attempt to stop clutter of towers in town.
Yeah.
So, I think there's a precedent to not, to carefully consider, that every time we do this, we're adding something beyond the zoning height that's set for that site, which some people may assume we're gonna enforce, when they choose to buy near a place that's getting extensions for towers, and things like that. That's all. As long as it's in there overtly, as something identified, that we are granting...
Is it a finding in the reso?
I'm not sure that I see it's overtly in there.
Okay, so, okay, so, that's a good point. Let's, we'll add a finding to the resolution to that effect, so it becomes part of the approval, other than just on the plans. Okay? All right.
I would personally like to see a condition added, that the color of the antenna would be bronze, or something unobtrusive.
So, planning condition number one, talks about screening of the antenna and the equipment, but what it says is, shall be painted a non-reflective gray, to match with the surrounding rooftops, so maybe the commission would like to change the word gray to a different... It kind of addresses that, hey, make that antenna that's poking out over the Mansard, make it blend in with the surrounding area.
Do you, we can have, you want it to match the brownish color of the Mansard roof there? Is that what you're thinking?
Or perhaps just say, shall be painted to match with the surrounding rooftop, to the satisfaction of the community development manager? I mean, just throwing that out there.
Well, yeah. You have energy?
Sure.
I think the roof is probably gray, the roof material, the horizontal roof material, but what you're gonna see is, you're gonna see it in relation to the Mansard roof. So, I think probably the Mansard roof color would probably, it would blend in better.
Yeah, okay, we can do that.
Or just saying the visible rooftop.
Right.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Just, yeah, non-reflective color matching the Mansard, is, I guess, what we're saying. And just to be specific, in number six, it talks about the post-construction compliance report, and could we insert, to include exposure levels in the second-floor offices?
Yes, so...
And courtyard?
Yeah, include second, areas of second-floor office, courtyard area, and exterior staircase, and then perhaps revise within 90 days of construction completion, to instead say, prior to final occupancy or final inspection, and that gets that report done sooner.
The one thing, I mean, just as an aside, the one thing that's sort of reassuring is that the levels, that the ground-level exposures that they're reporting here, appear to include the AT&amp;T antennas, which are much more powerful than these, you know, about, it looked like about 70 percent of the exposure was AT&amp;T, was on AT&amp;T. And the AT&amp;T antennas point out, so they don't impact the offices directly below this antenna, so that's a little bit reassuring. So, with those, are there any further amendments or changes that we'd like to see being inserted? So, with those, and I think you have those... So with those cha, and I think you have those.
Cindy has great notes, I can see them from here. She was ahead of all of us when she was writing them down, so.
Do we have a motion then to approve this project as amended?
Well, I'll move to approve CPO 461 and UPO 405. That's resolution 45-15 with the amended conditions of 72-hour backup, emergency power backup if, unless it can be deemed infeasible, and the changes to condition number six requiring, requiring a post-construction, or post-construction radiation measurement.
And also condition number one.
And addition to condition number one, or change to condition number one of the antenna color.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call on this?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Sodowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Luer?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Aye.
Chairperson Teft?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Very good. So our next public hearing item is B2, which is case number CP 0-460 and UP 0-402 at 485 Piney Way, and our telecommunications expert is going to continue with this report.
Thank you, Chair Teft. So this is 485 Piney Way. It is a, another small cell site antenna request for Verizon Wireless. Staff had originally proposed to present to you the staff report presentation, however, due to an error that was discovered in the noticing, not all of the people within the 500-foot buffer were duly noted, noticed of tonight's hearing. So staff is requesting that the project be continued to next Tuesday, December 1st, for full consideration at that time. However, since it was noticed in the Tribune, staff would recommend that the planning commission open the public hearing, take any comments from people who may have showed up, then close the public hearing and continue it to the December 1st meeting. Thank you.
Very good. So again, I'll ask for any disclosure of ex parte communications. Are there any questions for staff at this time? So then, this is a public hearing item, we will open it to any members of the public that would like to comment, including the applicant.
My name is Diane Anderson. I live at 650 South Street, right across a small road from the church. And I'm appalled that the planning commission at the church would even consider putting a cellphone tower in the midst of all of our residential houses. I don't even have the luxury of having a parking lot between me and the church. So I think it's very irresponsible. I think it should be doing in an industrial spot, not in the middle of all the houses. And, you know, I haven't had a chance to talk to all my neighbors, but I'm going to. I think that, I don't know if the church is so hungry for money, I don't know, but I think they could find a better spot than the middle of all the houses. And that's, that's all I've got to say. And I know a lot of people can be very unhappy about this.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak to this topic? Okay, seeing none, we will close public comment, bring it back to the commission for consideration of continuation unless there's further comment. Do I hear a motion to continue this? Do we, do we want to continue to the, okay, to a time certain, to December 1st? Very good. Okay. So do I hear, do I hear a motion to continue this item to December 1st?
I move to continue CPO-460 and UPO-402 to the December 1st planning commission meeting.
I'll second. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. I think, I think a voice vote would be adequate on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries 5-0. So then moving on, that concludes all of our public hearings for this evening, so we'll move on to unfinished business, which is item number C1 involving the property, the city property on Mendoro Street, west of Highway 1. And I think Scott is going to fill us in on this.
Yes, thank you, Chair Teft, members of the commission. So this evening, you have before you the Mendoro Lot Sales, it's a city-owned property and the general plan consistency for the planning commission. The property in question is, is located at the end of Mendoro Street, abutting the Highway 1 right-of-way on the, on the west side of Highway 1. You can see it on the site location map up there. The property was acquired from the county in 1991 through a tax lien sale, purpose of which was to relocate a booster station from Vashon over to Mendoro. That booster front was never relocated, in fact, I think it was reconstructed in its existing location. The property in question is approximately 2,300 square foot in size. The planning commission has reviewed this item on September 15th and October 6th, providing direction to staff to re, to take a look at the property as far as what the actual lot size is and what the buildable area was. We contracted, the public works department did, for a survey with MBS Land surveys to lay out the site and to identify an easement across the waterline that traverses the property. The, the map that you see on the, on the screen there shows, and the arrow at the top identifies the waterline and the five-foot easement that the waterline will be placed in. The subject property has setbacks on the front of 15, on the side of 5, and the rear of 5. Again, lot size is approximately 2,300 square foot. What that leaves for a developable, a developable footprint is 1,150 square feet. Lot coverage for this property would be 50% for the structure. An 1,150 square foot footprint would equate to about a 950 square foot of living area with a, either enclosed single-car garage and/or carport, which is allowed in this The California Government Code requires review of property that's for sale by the planning commission and requires the planning commission to make a confiding of consistency with the, with the city's general plan. The city's general plan identifies this property as moderate density residential, and the general plan contains no other policies that suggest a different use for this property. Idea there being is there's nothing in, say, the recreational component of the general plan that says it's supposed to be a park or something like that. And therefore, the planning commission can make the requisite findings. I do have one other, one item to add to this, which would be a finding. And the commission at the previous hearing had noted some concern related to, you know, what happens when you develop the smaller lot in this area? And there was some concerns about, well, it would require variances and things along that nature. And I thought that in discussions with Chair Teft, that maybe we could come up with a finding that had the planning commission indicating that, that no variances or exceptions should be approved related to the development of a lot, because it can be developed consistent with our current standards. So the suggestion in that instance would be to add the following finding, would be a third finding in the resolution, that the planning commission of the City of Morro Bay has evaluated the suitability of the lot for development in relation to applicable provisions of the general plan, local coastal plan and zoning code, including section 1724 040. That's the R1 standard section of the zoning ordinance, and finds that the lot can be developed consistent with these policy documents without need for future exceptions or variances. So that would be a finding that we would add into this. What that would do was notify future folks that would be buying the lot, that they shouldn't be coming forward, variance requests, exception requests and things like that. The site's small, you have an 1,150 square foot footprint, put your house inside that. The only other thing that I would add that I didn't include in the slide was, I did give you in the staff report, a couple of examples of adjacent properties with the square footage of the homes, because that was a concern that was noted. And you have houses ranging from 1,100 square foot to 1,300 square feet in the direct, in immediate vicinity around the house. So those, those numbers are provided on page three of your staff report. With that, staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt the attached resolution with the added finding related to variances. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Very good. Any, any ex parte communications to report? Good. Questions of staff? Michael?
Scott, I didn't look at this carefully enough, but do we know, do any existing properties around there have exceptionable situations? Like, if I look at the property diagonally across, I'm just guessing, it looks like the facade doesn't line up with the main facade of the two adjacent houses. So it looks like there might be a front yard setback issue already. I'm just wondering, in a way, I understand why we have the clause about it's buildable. Any lot you buy in town theoretically is buildable, but anybody would also have the legal option to choose to challenge any of these things, too. So I guess, why would we say this one?
I think the only idea is here, I mean, you can put this in a resolution and it doesn't obligate anybody that purchases a lot to follow that direction. So what it does, though, is notify them that the, that the planning commission has looked at it and felt that, yes, you have a developable footprint there and you should place your house within that. The expectation is that you, you have a flat lot and that you can design a house consistent with our, our development standards, which is setbacks and lot coverage and height, and you should do so within that envelope. And again, that the planning commission has looked at that and felt that that's a reasonable thing to, you know, to adhere to. That's what this does. Anybody can come forward and request any exception or variance, regardless of any finding that you put in this resolution. It's again, more to put them on notice. And it lets future staff know that that's an issue as well.
I guess my sense is, some of the side yards across the street look really narrow. That's just from the graphic of the, of the Google Earth image there. So I wondered if there was already a case, just from the proximity of other lots, that would suggest that those things would be challengeable already?
Well, when you're, okay, well, you know, findings for variances are typically that you have some unique factor associated with your lot. I don't think, while it's not exactly rectangular, it's pretty close. It's relatively flat, so it's not steeply sloped. So those are the types of things. It doesn't have any unique feature like the example of a huge boulder that means you can't really move it, it makes it, it's too costly to move or something, so you want to design around that and push a house into a setback. It doesn't have any of those things. It has, its unique feature is that it's kind of small. But we have lots of kind of small lots in town, and that is certainly not a unique feature. You go across Highway 1, there's a whole bunch of lots over there that are the same size as this. So, I mean, I think that's kind of the idea there.
Okay.
You're certainly not compelled to add that condition if you don't, or that finding if you don't want to. It's up to a majority of the folks sitting there on the dais.
Any other questions for staff?
I just want to make sure that I'm clear on the easement issue. We got an easement from Caltrans, yeah?
No, we're putting an easement over the waterline.
Within the property?
Correct. That's, I'm sorry, that's what the, that's what the kind of highlighted line at the top.
Okay, so the, the waterline?
Taverses approximately the middle of that side setback to the top of the lot.
Oh, okay. Okay, and then there was an easement back there with the sewer easement, too, but I don't see it. Is that on the other side? Not really?
Yeah, it's not on there.
Okay. Because that sewer line kind of goes back on the backside. But I, I looked over there, I couldn't find a lamp hole, but that, that wasn't my, one of my main concern. My main concern was the waterline.
And the good thing is, it's approximately in the center of what that setback would be. And it's fairly close to the surface.
Yeah, you know, what, what, what my, what I liked about going into the, asking Caltrans is that when you go to replace that line, you know what I mean, you leave that going and then you put another one in next to it, then you get it online. So that's kind of what I, right now, it's right up against a potential building on the house, you know?
Yeah, I mean, the, the public works department looked at it pretty closely and felt, given that it was fairly shallow, that access to the thing was not an issue. If you put a house right up to that setback there, like, it's not a problem, we can get in there.
No, no worries, huh?
No, they didn't. Neither the, I spoke to, so I spoke to the, I spoke to the public works director, separate from the folks that actually go and do the work. I was curious. And they didn't, and they didn't have a issue. They were like, yeah, it's not a problem, it's shallow, so we can get in there, it's no big deal.
Okay, okay, so you talked to the work. Okay, good.
Commissioner Luer had brought up at the last time it was, at this meeting, about offering the property in these cases to the people who, you know, the neighbors, adjacent neighbors. Was any discussion, did you have any further discussion on that?
No, that was not the direction of the city council.
Okay.
Certainly, the neighbors could choose to put an offer in on it, but that, that was not the direction of the council.
Scott, I thought, refresh my memory on these, but I thought side setbacks were determined as 10% of the lot width?
They're, they're, they're five feet in, in this area.
They're in, in the beach track, it's five foot minimum.
Yeah, it's the R1, I think I.
SP overlay?
Yeah, it's one of the S overlays that has it specifically on it.
Okay, okay. And, and, you know, my concern was that if this was not a buildable lot, to offer it to the, to the adjacent property owners first. But, but seeing as it is a buildable lot, then it, you know, it should go on the open market.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we've kind of, we've kind of moved over into comment, so does anyone, in addition, would anyone else like to comment on this item? It's not a public hearing.
We do have people that want to speak to it, though. I think it would be appropriate.
I would, I would have no problem opening public comment.
Yeah, I mean, we do have commentary in the staff report from at least one of the folks in the, in the audience, but I think he'd probably like to speak, so.
If there's no objection, I would be happy to open very well.
Thank you.
We will open public comment for anyone who would like to speak.
Good evening. My name is Ted Shady, 182 Mendoro Street. I have the property directly next door, directly to the west of the lot in question. I sent two, I sent two letters to you, I encourage you to read them. I guess I was a little bit disappointed. I attached a resolution, a proposed resolution with some of this language to my second letter and it didn't make it into the board packet. I apologize. Yeah. I, you're right, it's not in there. I had it as a separate document. Again, I apologize. That's okay. It was in the previous, I think we did pass it out previously. First of all, I appreciate the survey, the city surveying the lot. There was some question as to where the corners were and MBS came out and, and put the corners in and I had to guess where to put my fence and my wall and I was, I was one inch inside of my property line, so I guessed, I guessed pretty good, I was pretty pleased with that. I'd like to spend a couple of minutes just on the building size on the, I'm glad you kept it there, on the buildable footprint. The lot is actually 2297 square feet. Scott says about 2,300, so I would say that, that's the same. The building size is 50% coverage or whatever is left after you subtract the setbacks, whichever one is smaller. So in this case, when we subtract the 5, 5, 5 and 15, we're left with, not 1,150, but we're left with 1,128 square feet. So that's your total buildable area, and that includes your garage. If you put a one-car garage, that's 10 by 20, you're left with a house of 928 square feet. So that, that's really, and that's, that's a feasible house. But as, as the commission talked last time, we, during your comments, you had a discussion about the size, bulk and scale of existing houses on the street. I love those, those words together, they kind of go. And, and in order to address that, Scott put a number of houses in the neighborhood, the size of a number of houses in the neighborhood, and says that it, that it compares favorably, the building footprint compares favorably. But first of all, we have to go from 1,150 to 928, so that's a pretty good drop there. But first of all, we have to go from 1,150 to 928, so that's a pretty good drop there. But the smallest house on that list is actually my house. I have the smallest, the smallest existing house on Mendoza Street. Scott, it's listed as 1,158, it's actually, the house size is 1,206. But that includes, that's the livable area. The building footprint has to add the garage. So when you add the garage, my house is actually 1,659, because I have a two-car garage. So we, so what you really have to do is you have to compare my house at 1,659 to the adjusted there of 1,128, and my house is 47% bigger than the house would be, that would be built on this lot. That's a, that's almost a 50% swing in size. I just don't think that's consistent with the size, bulk, and scale of the other houses on this street. So, you know, I really think that if this lot was in a normal, you know, mid-corner or a mid-block location, we would have, we would have size and scale problems. But we've got additional constraints with this lot. We talked about the water main, I'm glad we located the water main. That doesn't seem to be a problem. Five feet on a shallow line would seem to be a reasonable, you know, maybe not ideal, but a reasonable easement for the guys to get into and work on it. But, you know, there is no mention of the fact that we have this, a tree that's considered major vegetation under City Resolution 39-7. It's the largest remaining tree along the west side of the highway until you get into town. There's a utility pole right smack in the middle, that's not really shown there, it's barely shown. And it's got two guy wires, guy wires going in two directions. I don't know where we're going to put that, where you're going to put the utility pole, this is certainly not going to put it on my property. It has to be guided because it's, because the line changes direction, so it's not just going straight through, and you could put it in one of the side easements. You've got to have guys going in two directions in order to hold it up. There is no on-street parking. There can be no on-street parking in front of this house because there's no parking allowed on the side of the street. The streets are so narrow, there's only parking allowed on one side. So parking is only allowed on the other side of the street. And the house on the other side of the street has two driveways. There's no space between those driveways in order to put, in order to put on-street parking. And the house across the street would use it if they had it. So there's no on-street parking near this property. And I'm a civil engineer, I did city engineering for many years. If you try to do a turning movement study in order to get a car parked into a driveway, either, it would really have to be on the bottom of the picture there. You can't get the car backed out and get down the street, there's not enough room to pull a car in and back a car out. You would have to pull the car in and then back down the street in order to find somebody else's driveway and back into their driveway to get it turned around. So, you know, it's because there's no turnaround at the end of Mendoza Street or end of any of these beach track lots, you know, you'll see that most of the driveways are either wide at the, if they're at the end, two-car garage where you can kind of maneuver around, or they're placed far enough back on the lot that you can get in and out of the lot. So, you know, getting in and out of this, out of this lot with its, with its almost mandatory one-car, one-car driveway is going to be difficult. And then finally, constraint, you know, it is directly adjacent to Highway One with the noise and air pollution associated with that. But that's, you know, that's a buyer beware issue. I've certainly gotten used to the noise. So I do have, but I do have a suggestion, and Commissioner Lur raised it last time. You know, I would argue that a single-family house is not consistent or compatible with the size, bulk, and scale of the existing houses on this street, and that the city should offer it to the adjacent property owner. In fact, I've made an offer to the city for the lot. I'm offering the same price per square foot that the city is asking for the Cloisters lot. So you've got a similar lot for sale on the Cloisters, it's one acre. I took the one acre divided by the asking price, I came up with a price per square foot, and I made that offer to the city. That would seem to be a reasonable, that would seem to be a reasonable offer. With that, with those suggestions, I would ask that the board adopt the resolution, certainly with the third finding that Scott suggested. However, with, just as a bit of advice, suggestion, with regard to SEQA, SEQA does provide for a categorical exemption for the sale of government property. It's a Class 12 exemption, Section 15312 of the SEQA guidelines. Rather than rely on the general exemption, which is often a dangerous thing to try to rely on, there's a specific Class 12 exemption for the sale of government property. But you have to make a couple of findings, and I included those findings in my draft resolution. So with that, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who would like to speak to this? Okay, seeing none, then we will close public comment, bring it back to the commission for discussion. Let's start it here, Catherine. We started with Michael last time.
You know, it's unusual, because usually we're asked to, you know, for exemptions to build larger homes, and here it would be a smaller home. I do think, I want to thank Scott for taking the time and going forward and getting all the information that we needed on this lot at this point in time. I'm willing to approve, I'm supportive of the resolution to have this as a buildable lot.
As the speaker mentioned, you know, I am, I do think that any remnant lots or portions that are not buildable lots should be offered to the adjacent landowners first, so that they can, could then be combined into a single parcel and not allow another structure on there, which would be the, you know, the condition you would set on a portion of a remnant, a remnant lot or a portion lot that would be, that would not be a buildable lot. But, you know, I could sketch out something on this that would be buildable and be fun to live in, and, you know, we're looking for, I mean, it could be workforce housing, it could be, you know, small by design, you know, or affordable by design. I don't think you're going to be, you know, you're not going to be doing two stories. And the biggest problem, you know, like he mentioned, too, is the power pole. But, you know, there's ways to relocate power poles and to double them up and to double guy them, that I believe you could, you can move this power pole to the edge of the property and do a, do a double pole with a cinch guy or something in that to make it work. I think the engineering is there. So I, I think, I can see all the problems with this lot, but I can also see the solutions. Whether it's economically feasible or not, that's something that a buyer would need to, to look at. But I think, I think the information is here for a buyer to make a fair determination. And so, so I would support it as a buildable lot.
Thanks for doing all that, Scott, I appreciate it. I wish that we would have pursued more with the Caltrans on that easement, okay? That's my opinion. But, that aside, I've changed my position since the last time we looked at this. And years ago in aerospace, I used to tell my boss, there was never problems, it's just opportunities, you know? So that's kind of what I see with this. It's, it's an, it's an opportunity to be creative with something. I do want to ask you something, though, regarding the, what the speaker mentioned about the turnaround with the car. You know, like, can-
I haven't looked at it closely. I'm sure there are things that we can do to accommodate backing out into the street and turning the car around. There are options available related to design and orientation and things like that, that we could probably get a car in and out of a garage out of the street and out in a forward motion. Have to look at it more in-depth to answer the question specifically, but I think there are probably opportunities there, we could accommodate that.
Anyway, that's, that's all I have to say.
Michael?
I don't know, I make my living teaching people to dream, and this, to me, is an incredible opportunity for something different. The house across the street appears to have a really different footprint. Most of the time, we're seeing, over time, subdivisions gradually change so that you get different identity with each home. And so I just think this one is a great opportunity. It's beach block, small lot. You know, we're invested in a part of San Diego where 900-square-foot houses go for half a million dollars. And I think beach block guarantees this is going to have a quality piece on it. It's not going to be a, you know, granny house attached to another large home or something like that, it's going to be small residence. So I'm happy to vote for it.
Well, few things. I don't, I'm not, as you know, I'm not a builder, you know? But the one thing I did notice about the utility pole is, I don't think it's a power pole. I, it's, I think it's a cable or, you know, something that might potentially be easier to deal with than high voltage. So, you know, that may mitigate that. With regard to the issue of size, bulk, and scale, this has been an ongoing topic of discussion for this commission. It's important, I think it's important to recognize that the general plan requires new development to be compatible in size, bulk, and scale. It doesn't require identical. And to me, there is something about a home which is oversized for an area that is more impactful than a home that's smaller. So I'm not, this certainly is not the same size as all of the houses in the neighborhood. I'm not sure it's not compatible, however. In terms of the size of the house, don't, you know, please don't get me wrong, I'm in favor of small-size housing developments. I would actually like to see the new general plan deal with that, deal with that issue. The thing, I do have a concern here that, because most small housing developments, most developments that consist of small houses have other amenities that are sort of built-in, common open space, community orientation toward, you know, houses are oriented towards each other, transit available. None of that is, none of that is provided here. And that causes me some concern. However, on the other hand, we had a family come before us a couple of meetings ago and say, we don't need all that stuff, we don't care. So, so I guess, you know, that's really kind of a judgment, in this case, it's probably a judgment for the marketplace to make rather than, you know, for us to make. And then finally, the other concern that I had, and still have to a degree, is the idea that there may be considerable pressure with regard to this lot for variances and/or exceptions. I would, I appreciate the wording of this resolution. I would really like to see it say that we have looked at it and we find that there are no special circumstances that would warrant the granting of a variance, because that's required. That's a finding that is required in order for a variance to. And I would, I'd like to see that phrase, no special circumstances with regard to this property in there, which will make it a little bit more, a little bit stronger, a little bit, you know, it'll be a little bit more, more definite that we've, in other words, you can come, there's nothing to stop somebody from requesting a variance, you can come, but we've already looked at it, the property, and found that there are not the special circumstances that would, that would warrant granting a variance. So, and then in terms of offering it to the adjacent property owner, basically, if it goes on the market, it will be offered to the adjacent property owner. There's no, there's nothing, there's nothing that says a house has to be built here. If the, if the next-door neighbor wants to, if Mr. Shade wants to buy this property, he's free to do it. So I guess I'm changing my position as well, and would be prepared to support the resolution.
I'd just like to comment on something you said, that we've investigated this and found that there is no special, we can't find any special findings-
Special circumstances.
-special circumstances. But we haven't done the investigation that you would in the preparation of a building, a set of building plans. So there may be something that could come up that we haven't investigated at this point. I don't have a problem saying that, you know, yeah, we're leaning so that we, you know, we're not really going to look favorably on any variances, but there may be any one of a number of studies that somebody could come up with that may be a feasible special condition that could support that finding. So I just wouldn't, wouldn't want to preclude a future planning commission from making a proper ruling, you know? So, so that, we haven't done all the, all the exploratory things that you would do prior to building a house on this. So that's all I would say.
May, but given the facts that we have right now, right? If we put, that we at this time don't see any special circumstances, they could still bring, bring it forward, right? And that other, you know, whatever planning commission say, you know, you guys, you know, did the building here, and we didn't foresee this thing. So they could still do that, but at least it would be a little stronger language.
They could always, at a future time, say, well, we do see special circumstances, you know?
That's absolutely true. All this does is kind of, one, it's something that's in the record that staff can look at and that any future buyer can see. So it lets them know that the tenor, at least of the commission, if it is, maybe it's not, is this way that they should be developing consistent with the current standards. Now, again, doesn't, this doesn't do anything to preclude a future development from coming forward and saying, nope, I need a setback variance, and here's my justification, and planning commission, I want it approved, and the planning commission will then review it on the facts and make a decision. It doesn't bind any future purchase of the property to anything, it just really kind of lets people know, hey, the expectation is that you're going to come in with a compliant project.
Which is almost, to me, I'm sorry, which to me is almost a disclosure issue. In other words, I, you know, I think if somebody looks at the property and says, oh, well, I could get, you know, I could get an exception and go up 25 feet, and, you know, and, you know, I think it's kind of saying to people, don't count on it.
I'm totally supportive of that, Dr. Taff. I think, you know, I've changed my position, you know, I think I was, I voted no last time. And, but it's really just based on that, you know, the work that Scott had done that shows that you can build a compliant home there. And if, unless we put a resolution or a third finding, you know, I don't think that, I think that people feel that they can come back and say, well, they really didn't mean it, I can, you know, go a little bit more here, a little bit less there. And I think it's important that, your presentation was one of the reasons that, you know, I felt that we should vote this, you know, the way I, you know, to support the resolution. And if we don't have that finding in it, I would be very uncomfortable.
How do you guys feel about the?
I don't think it has any teeth, so I don't care. I mean, I, I, I think this is a perfect lot to test, to test the edges. And I wouldn't support it, but that's not going to keep me from voting for the project to go through.
I, I, I supported the way it's drafted.
So, the way it's drafted, with the addition of the special circumstance discussion?
Oh, okay.
Right. Okay. All right. So, yeah. Okay. That's good.
Given my druthers, I'd support the way it's drafted there over any added language. But that's just my druthers. So, but I agree with Commissioner Lucas. I still think that, you know, if you do some investigation and find out there's, there's something that we didn't see, they could still bring it forward, but it's...
Well, so why don't we just do a quick straw poll to give Scott direction on this? So, the special circumstances language, up or down? Down? Up? I'm up. Down? Okay. So we're 3-2 on that.
Okay.
Which is the way, which is kind of the, you know, kind of the way we went last time. Well, but at least we're, we're more united than we were at our last, the last time we considered this. Okay. So with that, with that modification, do we have a motion to? Let me ask you, just, just to be, just to be clear. Scott, state law says the planning commission has to approve this sale.
You're making, yeah, you're making, what you're doing is making a finding that the sale of the property is consistent with the general plan.
With the general plan.
Yeah. That's the, that's the basis of why we're here.
Now, is that a decision which is appealable to council? This is, this is kind of an unusual thing for us to do.
Well, I mean, I, I asked an interesting question, and I'm not sure the answer of it, because the council's the one that approves the sale of the property, so that's going to be a hearing item that would be on consent, or probably not, I don't know, maybe, it just depends on how they do it. So you appeal the finding, I guess you can. I mean, it's, it's a decision by this body that's a resolution. A resolution could be appealed to the city council. Your decisions, your decisions that are rendered here, there is an appeal process for all of them.
Okay.
So yes, I'd walk myself through that for a second, but yeah. Yes, it could be appealed if they wanted to do that. Also noting that any future sale is going to go before the council as well, so.
Right. Is it appealable to the coastal commission?
No.
No.
They don't get to tell us whether they, we can sell our own property or not.
And it's not between the nearest, the first public road?
And it's the general plan, not the LCP.
Yeah. And so there are any other legal bodies that, you know, have control over this, any brown act or anything?
I mean, literally, even, okay, so if the planning commission said, "Hmm, we don't like this. There's a neighborhood compatibility issue. We're not approving the resolution." You approve that, yeah, so I gave a resolution, I would move that forward to the city council. The city council could overturn it if they wanted to. They would just bring it to them, and we're going to make the decision, and we either agree or don't agree with you. I guess they wouldn't bring it forward if they agree, if they agreed with you, but if they didn't, then they would.
Could, would there be any grounds for a court action? I mean, if somebody wanted to take it like that, is, I mean...
I'm not going to weigh in on legal issues.
Okay.
You people can see, you can get, I mean, cities get sued for everything.
Yeah.
But you, but you can get into court without much grounds.
Yeah.
That's, that's all, that's a relevant question.
Success is another question. Yeah. It's probably the more pertinent one.
Okay. So do we have a, do we have a motion to, a motion to adopt or not adopt Resolution 33-15 as amended?
I'll move to adopt Resolution 33-15 as amended with special circumstances.
I'll second it. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing that, did I ask for ex parte communications? Oh, it's not a hearing item.
It's not a hearing item, right?
But anyway, okay, so just for the record. So we have a motion, we have a second, seeing no discussion on the motion, can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Lucas.
Hi.
Commissioner Sadowski.
Hi.
Commissioner Luer.
Yes.
Commissioner Swanson.
Yes.
Chair Taft.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Very good. So having, we have no new business this evening, so we'll move on to publish, public, planning commissioner comments, future agenda items, et cetera. I, as you guys know, I'm on the WRFCAT committee, the Water Reclamation Facility Committee. And they've been moving along. One of, one of the things that I've always been, had an issue with for, and still do, was the capacity issue of the WRF. And recently, I was, there's some, it has come to my attention, and there's a letter that came from the city of Morro Bay, and I would like to ask Scott a little bit more about it. Scott, I, I apologize for not, I had a problem with my truck today, and all kind of problems, and I couldn't get to you before this, but I made a copy, this is a letter that you wrote, and it had to do with a children's center that was being entertained in the...
In a, a children's cancer hospital on what used to be the Ragetti Ranch, which is just inland on 41 of the city boundary.
Okay. It was a good letter, a nice letter, the way you written it. And I, I got an extra copy for you there if you want. But one of, one of the things that I, I have a question for is these kind of, like, when, first of all, does the city council know about this, that these kind of things that are being proposed? Because what, what I look at is like, here, here we are, sitting at the WRF, and we're talking at 1.1, MGD, right? Infrastructure. We're, I've always been for a water reclamation facility, not a water reclamation-ready facility, okay? That's two different things. Water reclamation facility, you're making water, okay? And that's what they're, what they're talking about right now is water reclamation-ready in five years, and then, you know, tacking on something else in a couple of years after that. And I just want to know a little bit how the process, you know, how we can, you know, like, is there a way that we could integrate these things as they come up with the WRF, especially when we're dealing with, you know, like, like I said, I have a, the thing with the capacity issue, you know?
I exactly understand where you're coming from, Commissioner Sadowski. And so in, in looking at this, we, we've, you know, we had had several conversations with the project applicant on this proposal. And we, you know, internally, from a staff standpoint, agreed to continue sort of working with them and following the process through the county, because it's in the county. And the only way that they were ever going to be able to build the facility is if at some, at some point in the future, it came into the city. We told the applicant that. The applicant chose to enter into Escrow with the Madonnas who own the Ragetti property. And so he, so he was process, he started, he started the discussions with the county, what it would take to, you know, actually put it in the county and have it developed out there. And they were going to start that planning process, and even had a, you know, a meeting before the county board of supervisors to talk about an LCP amendment recently. But what has happened since then is the, the applicant for that project has withdrawn from Escrow.
Yeah, but see, in this, in this letter, we're talking about, one of the things for the development is to supply them with water from their water reclamation facility. Doesn't mention anything about taking care of the sewer, right? And then you need to have a vote by the people if you're going to annex in any property that's not a utility, right? So there's like a lot of these issues. I'm just saying, is there a process, when these things are being discussed, is it a process that we can kind of lace in through the planning commission, or?
Well, the, well, the, I mean, the, the Public Works Department was aware of this. Rob Leivik, Public Works Director, was aware of it. And so was staff, the city manager, many of the council members, because it'd been spinning around out there for a while. The gentleman had come to the city and talked to us, and we said, "Well, we don't have any property in the city that could accommodate a facility of that size." And because they want, he was looking to put it on the city's border, we wanted to stay engaged. And so I attended a meeting at the county with all of the, you know, representative divisions that would have something to say about that type of annexation. We met, you know, somewhat informally with Lafco, David Church, the executive director of Lafco, you know, where we said, you know, he said, "Well, can't annex any property until you have water." And we're like, "We're aware of that. And we're not proposing to do that, but there is a potential, at some point way down the road, that there might be water available. And that would be something to consider at that time." And that's about the extent of the conversation we have with Lafco. They just said, "Without water, you can't annex." And we said, "We know that. Thank you." And so the applicant thought, while the city was going through the water reclamation facility process, it's going to take us five-plus years to build, then he was going to start maybe his process with the county, and then if it, if he got a good feeling about, "Yeah, this looks like something that he could be successful with," he would kind of continue processing that if there was a avenue to make that available. In fact, the staff report that the county staff put together, James Caruso being the planner, was not favorable to it, but did provide an option, because this is ag land out there. And said, "Well, county board supervisors, if you think the children's cancer hospital is something that maybe we want to take a look at and maybe don't want to kill right now, then let's maybe come up with a proposal where we split off a chunk of it where the hospital could be, re-change the land use of that area to something that would allow that type of facility on it, and then preserve the rest of the 230 acres, because it's 251 or three, depending on who you talk to, acres in size, preserve the rest of it in permanent, you know, agricultural, open space, what have you." And so that was one of the options. It was in the staff report. I don't think that ever got anywhere, because the applicant has since withdrawn from Escrow.
Yeah, you know, my thing, my thing is just that, you know, we're sitting at WRFCAT here, you know, and, you know, I think that these kind of things would be nice to have in, in discussion, especially with, like, a hospital, you have emerging contaminants and all this other stuff, you know? So that's all I'm saying.
So we, so what had happened is, while the applicant was kind of going through the process, we said, "You should come in and really have a specific conversation and sit down with Public Works Director about what would be needed and those types of things." And that never happened.
Okay.
So, so we gave direction, you know, to him about that, and even contacted him initially and said he was going to come in and talk to us, and never did. And I think it's because he wasn't getting positive feedback from the county board of supervisors, and I think he felt that it probably wasn't going to happen, he wasn't going to be able to sort of process running alongside of the water reclamation facility, and he's pulled back.
Yeah, I, I think that if you, you know, like, these kind of things, if we're talking about, like, annexing and stuff, it's not only the county, we bring it into the city because it's, you know, the city's reclamation.
And there wasn't going to be any way we could make any decisions about that until we were way, way down the road in the water reclamation facility process. I mean, and that's what we told them. We said, "Yeah, I mean, we're happy to continue talking to you and stay engaged, because we want to be engaged with development that's on our border." And that's what we sort of promised to do.
Okay.
And it didn't, you didn't really get any further than, you know, on the city side of things than what I just explained to you. It really, we had some initial conversations, he went and talked to the county, was hanging out over there doing things, and then he sort of stopped contacting them. In fact, I got a call from the, James Caruso, the project planner on it from the county, asking if I had heard from the applicant, because he hadn't had any contact with him in weeks. And then they were getting ready to go to the county board, and then, so I did a little bit of outreach and found out that, yeah, indeed, in fact, he had withdrawn, was in the process of withdrawing, and now has withdrawn out of Escrow.
Thank you very much, Scott. And I, again, I apologize that I didn't get it with you before, you know, because I, I...
Happy to talk about it, is, I know something about it. Happy to give you whatever information I have.
Thanks.
Yep.
Well, while we're talking about projects, Scott, a couple of quick updates, and is just curious about where we are with the haul-out facility. And then there's, also, there's, there was a house that burned down on Greenwood that they're putting a mobile home on, and just wondering where both of those stand.
So we, we did issue the permit for the placement of the manufactured home on the Greenwood site. Our ordinance does allow for the placement of manufactured homes, does require there to be a permanent foundation. The determination as to what reflects permanence is fairly vague in our ordinance. So we're using the HCD website definition, which is the definite, which is the definition of permanent foundation types that allows you to get financing for them. So that's kind of what we've gone back and talked to the applicant about with regard to their foundation. As far as the haul-out facility, we did meet a week or so ago with RRM and several other folks, folks from the HAB, Harbor Advisory Board and Subcommittee as well, and met with RRM, walked the site, went back to RRM, did a design charrette there, had, it's interesting sitting down with creative people when they're sketching and putting things down, because they brought their architects, landscape architects into the room. We had lunch, and we sat down, sort of dispersed among the tables, our architects and engineers and folks dispersed among the tables, and came up with about five different scenarios of things. We presented, Eric Endersby, Harbor Director, presented ideas that we wanted to be incorporated in there, as did Dana McClish. And so they incorporated those things into the different designs about, you know, how many boats, how much boat storage we wanted, what is the path of travel, where do we take it through if we come, you know, across into the city's parking lot there, how do we realign those parking spaces, create better pedestrian areas, how do we incorporate the maritime museum area? And so they came up with ideas for all of that. We sort of pick and chose the best pieces from all five of them, gave them back to Mike Sharad, who's the one that's leading this effort for RRM. And then they condensed that down into a couple of different concept drawings, and I believe, although Eric's on vacation right now, that they're taking it back to the Harbor Advisory Board for review at the next meeting. So that's kind of where that stands. It was an interesting process. They were able to fit, you know, the haul-out facility with some dry storage and maintenance buildings. Not only the current facilities for the Maritime Museum, which is that pad that's 400 square feet out there, and the building that's going to be there is going to be the sort of interim solution to it, but also an area that sits kind of along the front, front edge that it shares with the Parcadero, you know, there would be a larger future Maritime Museum building that would fit there, and kind of screen the boat storage stuff from behind, because it's probably not the prettiest thing. So they were able to kind of fit all of those things in there. We were able to come up with some additional parking spaces out of a reconfiguration of the parking. Yeah, so that's kind of where it stands.
Great. Glad to see it's moving.
Yeah.
Moving forward.
It was an interesting process, for sure. I was happy to be a part of it.
Interesting. Okay. Very good. So Scott, Community Development Manager comments. We haven't sucked enough out of you already.
Yeah, I, I don't know that I have much for you, other than we're going to be doing this again next week, because our, our next meeting's on the first. And so that's kind of what I've been doing, is trying to get all the packets together for, for you guys for that meeting. So I, other than that, the, the RFP period closed today for the general plan updates. I've only seen that we've gotten one proposal.
Ooh.
So that's, more, more to discuss about that in the future. Really framed much thought, other than I was disappointed with that. Initially, it looked like we were going to get maybe three, and then a couple of the folks ended up becoming part of the team that proposed. And then one of the folks from out of the area chose not to propose, I guess, and so we have one. It's nice that they're local, I guess, and that most of the subs are as well, but, yes, more discussion to come.
Okay. Well... Well, thank you very much for that. And with that, we will adjourn to our next regular meeting, which will be December 1st, 2015, right here. Thank you very much.
Scott, do you, do you, do you want these plans, or?
I don't expect this will go any further.
Go watch it.
Yeah, I am, I am.
Oops.
And he could probably just go ahead and pull them out tomorrow.
I know.
I didn't pick up my jacket, I didn't, so I was expecting.
I know.
Yeah.
It's pretty sick, man.
Sorry, Rain, I'm like, no, good, next time I look at him on the radar anymore.
That is, well, you know, the one thing that's done is fix the grass I find, you know, flood
and, you know, so.
The building's starting to turn a little bit red.
Yeah, they're going to, they're going to drive in.
Does anybody have any space on that?
So, yeah, so they, so they, they, and they know it from me, but, and that's the last
I heard.
Oh, wait.